Good evening. I would like to call this October ninth, twenty twenty five Board Work Session to order. I'll have board members read the mission and goals.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
The district goals are academic excellence in an evolving world, to prepare future-ready learners who persevere, adapt, problem-solve, think critically, and are supported by engaging learning experiences and intentional use of technology. Belonging: honor every individual's inherent dignity through equitable, inclusive, and diverse practices. Social and emotional growth: build a learning community that prioritizes social and emotional wellness as a foundation for academic success, resilience, and strong relationships. Community pride and civic engagement: empower students to be active, responsible, and contributing citizens through shared responsibility and community partnerships.
Thank you. I would like to note that Audrey McWilliams, the district's Assistant Business Manager, will be serving as the Substitute Secretary in Mr. Testa's absence this evening. Ms. McWilliams, will you please call the role?
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz? Dr. Sheldon?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass? Ms. Vitale? Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
And Dr. Kim?
Present.
I would like to note that the absences this evening, Ms. Snodgrass, Ms. Vitale, and Mr. Schwartz, are due to schedule conflicts. We'll continue on to Section Two for Public Comment. The Board values public comment. There are two opportunities on the agenda for members of the community to provide public comment during the meeting. The first opportunity on the agenda for public comment is to allow members of the community to speak on action items listed on the agenda for a board vote. The second opportunity on the agenda is towards the end of the meeting, which allows members of the community to speak on any topic. Public comment allows for residents of the township to speak for three minutes. A timer will be set at the start of your comments, and an alarm will sound indicating that your time has been completed. Should you have any materials from members of the board, please leave them at the end of the table with Ms. McWilliams for later distribution to the board. Please note that if appropriate, a member of the administration may follow up with you at a later date. Please state your name, confirm your residency, and a timer will begin for your allotted three-minute remarks. I do not have anyone on my list that has signed up for Section Two of Public Comment this evening, so we're going to continue on to Section Three. So we have three items on the agenda for approval by consent vote. Does any member wish to remove an item from the consent vote for discussion?
Item D is included in the consent vote, and I thought we've been removing the finance actions to have separate votes.
Okay, so the bill list is removed from the consent vote for discussion. Are there any others? I will ask for a motion to approve Items Three B and C as listed on the agenda.
Larson moved.
Hold for a second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda of Items Three and B are, Three B and C, excuse me, are approved. You will now consider the bill list. I'll ask for a motion to approve the bill list.
Read and then moved. Larson second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Is there, I cannot hear, Ms. Wedeman. Is there any way we can turn up your mic at all? Thank you. Moving on to Items Three E. This is Signatory Authority Resolution. Have a motion to approve the Signatory Authority Resolution for a test set for PennDOTS High Occupancy Permit related to Cooper Town Elementary renovations and additions project.
Okay, moved.
Larson second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Can we get a brief overview of what this means, what this is?
Yeah, I was just gonna add in comment. This is more of a time-sensitive matter that was discovered on the need to be done for Cooper Town. It's new. It did not, it was not something that needed to be done at Chatham Park during the renovation. So I believe tonight, when we hear presentation on facilities updates, there'll be further context, but this was not something with Chatham Park. It is relative just to Cooper Town.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So we've now concluded the action portion of the meeting, and we are moving into the working portion of the meeting, in which items are being provided for information and discussion purposes. None of the items discussed are being considered for official action at this time. Section Four takes us to Committee Reports. Item Four A is Policy and Personnel. I believe in Ms. Snodgrass's absence. Ms. Wedeman, you'll be providing us an update?
I think I'll turn it first to, that microphone's working, to Dr. Hayes, to provide some context about the three policies we have on tonight's agenda.
Yep, thank you. So in keeping with our practice of the policy calendar that we discussed in August, the policies for review tonight, One Thirty Seven, Policy Two Hundred, Policy Two O Two, are being reviewed due to the timeliness of the nature of school. They involve enrollment, homebound education, and district residency. So keeping with how we review policies in relation to the time of the school and the urgency of the matter, we'll go through those three. Reviewing policy, just for the community to know, Ms. Snodgrass has mentioned before, district set a goal for routine review of policies over the course of a number of years. Make sure they're clear, they're current, they're aligned with mission and goals. This practice just keeps us consistent with state federal law. It helps ensure that we're responding to the evolving needs of families, students, staff. And by doing this and engaging stakeholders, we're able to make sure that there are fair and consistent procedures, responsible use of public resources, and really just have that cornerstone approach to making sure we have effective governance improvements. So we'll go through the discussion of those three policies tonight. The first policy we're discussing is One Thirty Seven as it relates to homebound education. And I believe Mr. Barbetta has some updated detail on some of the revisions with that.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Hayes. So the primary additions or revisions to Policy One Thirty Seven Home Education Programs, it's really just a definition update for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. This was due to a revision or an update to School Code, Section Thirteen Twenty Seven Point One, in the ability of home education students to participate in such activities. While the School Code references co-curricular and extracurricular activities, it doesn't actually define it, so the definitions that we incorporated are from Model PSBA language. In addition to that, as for the, for the policy itself, there are just some minor cleanup. References to the child have been revised to student, and that, that's essentially all the revisions to the policy itself.
Ready to discuss? So for this One Thirty Seven, and again, I had talked to Ms. Snodgrass ahead of time, so some of the comments are ones she wanted me to bring into the record, too. This one has a purpose and authority, but the policy statement itself is not very clearly worded. The suggestion is the board instructs the district to monitor home education programs, or something more establishing that the policy itself. The purpose statement ends with a, a line that is our district's mission to educate and inspire a community of lifelong learners. And I guess it wasn't clear why that is in the purpose statement and how it relates to families that select home education. Suggestion was to remove that link between home education and the district's mission. And I have one other question. In the co-curricular and extracurricular activities, there's a statement that says that they would be available to all students who voluntarily elect to participate, except for those who cannot meet the eligibility requirements. And my question there is, like, eligibility could just mean being in a certain grade or being able to show up and pass.
Would it be helpful if we had examples?
Right, because sometimes we have activities that have tryouts, and you can be eligible but not meet the team, get a chair in the orchestra or in the play because of a tryout, and I wasn't sure what eligibility requirements meant there.
We can add some examples if that would be helpful.
Looking at the purpose, I wonder if, being that we want policy to be broad, maybe just keeping home education programming with, to be aligned with the district's mission, period, knowing that if we went through another strategic planning process, that the mission could change, and we'd need to go back and revise the policy. But I, I would hope that we want our home education programs to be in line with the district's mission, whatever the mission is.
Just also noting in to make sure that the AR and the policy definitions align so that the policy can accurately guide the administrative regulations.
Are we discussing the ARs as well this time?
What, yeah, sorry. One Thirty Seven AR is up there as well.
Yes. The, I can relay a couple of comments again from Ms. Snodgrass, who wondered if, if the purpose of the ARs is to help implement, and one of the guiding approaches to our policy audit is to have policies that are clear and useful, providing a good reference. This one seems to be clogged with a lot of repetitive language. Different sections seem to repeat the same, like transportation, things like that, that it would be helpful to focus on organizing it in a more concise way. There's this suggestion to see what is required by law and include citations there. That's not typical in our ARs, but might be useful here since some of this language may be required and not able to be edited by our district if it is.
Yeah, so, so almost all of this comes directly from School Code. And the reason it is somewhat verbose and lengthy is because what we did was, we kind of had two options. We could have separated them out by career and tech, co-curricular and extracurricular. We decided to put them all together. And so that's where some of the repetitiveness, repetitiveness with the transportation comes in. We can certainly take a deeper dive review and see what is necessary or unnecessary, or at least kind of create separation or delineate that a little bit more clear. Sorry, you can't hear me, can you? Now you can. We can, we can take some steps to make it clearer where the delineation is between each subsection, if that would help. The other option is we could potentially break it up into three subsections. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is.
I don't, I, I would welcome other people's inputs, but yeah, just relaying that this one is not the easiest to navigate or use. There is also, we haven't talked about Policy Two Hundred yet, but Section Ten includes some of the requirements. Ten B then says, "Complete all the enrollment forms and requirements in accordance with Board Policy Two Hundred," and as we'll see, Two Hundred doesn't have that kind of specificity in it, so that may be an errant reference.
Can we go back to One Thirty Seven for a minute, the ARs?
Oh, yeah, this is from the, One Thirty Seven AR, there's a number ten on page.
So I had a comment related to you noticing that this is a verbose AR. I'm wondering, is there a missing link here that we're not seeing? So the AR is kind of this, the guideline for how to go through and administer this kind of programming to make sure it's in compliance. But then with the family, is there different communication or training or support that they receive? Like, we're not handing this to a parent and saying, "Here's the AR, figure out your home education program." There's a liaison. Is that accurate?
Yes, Dr., oh, hello. Yes, Dr. Larson, that comes from our office in Curriculum and Instruction. There's also a webpage on our district webpage, as well as a reference on that to the State of Pennsylvania's website, which actually has improved vastly over the last two years. And then anyone at all, we field a lot of calls. Anyone at all can just give us a call, and we walk them through what they need. I will say it, we did have this, as Justin was saying, in three separate ARs before, which was also a lot to read. But at, at least having it in one place from a practical standpoint for us is easier to reference folks to say, "Yeah, there's one AR. Go ahead and look through that." But if there is a way to combine what's in there and say, you know, like, "All of this is true for everything, except for co-curriculars this and extracurriculars that," that would be really helpful if that's allowable.
We can certainly do that.
Are there any other, is there any other input or discussion as it relates to Policy One Thirty Seven or the AR associated with One Thirty Seven?
I guess what's the the timeline for like having a little bit more of a condensed version? Like, does that come back to the next? Because I know that there is a little bit of like a timing to get this approved.
I mean, we could do it if you want it for the next meeting, we could have it ready for review by then. I mean, it's and it's primarily, what I'm hearing is primarily the AR. So the policy will certainly be ready. And I have a couple ideas that I can talk about with Dr. Hayes and Dr. Saxo, how to make this flow a little bit better within the AR, if that works for the board.
Are we confident that what's in the AR isn't better housed in the actual policy? Or does the what's in the AR need to be more flexible in case the state guidelines change?
My personal opinion is that it it should probably live in the AR because a lot of this is procedural with regard to validating the the home education program and the steps that would need to be taken in accordance with school code if there is an issue with that program.
Thank you.
Having that policy updated sooner would help us than work on the AR guidelines. Obviously, since we're doing this with relevancy to the timeline of the school year, that'd be beneficial to guide the AR.
Just so I'm clear then, the policies, the goals for the policy to advance to first read at the next meeting?
Is that?
It's doable, it's doable.
If that's doable, then yes.
Okay.
Looking at policy two hundred, in this case with that policy, we are specifically looking at reviewing the administrative regulations for policy two hundred as it relates to the enrollment of students. If Mr. Rebetta, you can give some updates on some of those revisions as well.
Sure, so there was a Pennsylvania Department of Education, Basic Education Circular that was released in November of two thousand twenty-four. We happened to update this in February of two thousand and twenty-four. So there are some minor additions really that have to do with proof, forms of proof that are acceptable for registration requirements. And then also, excuse me, students experiencing homelessness and other forms of educational instability, which we worked on, I want to say back in two thousand twenty-three. But just adding a reference to that, even though that's the district's policy and in practice already, just making that a part of this policy or this AR as well. So those are the two primary adjustments. There was a little bit of cleanup that we did as well while we were in there with just the capitalization of the district and things like that throughout.
Can I ask, so the addition of the phrase a non-exhaustive list, is that to allow that there could be potentially something else that could be given?
Yes.
Okay. So like at an individual school, like, is that what the state's changing it that way so that this individual school district can maybe?
And Dr. McKay, the the non-exhaustive portion of that, it's it was from PDE.
Yeah.
So it it didn't give examples of what could be included in that non, yeah. But that's, that's, that's where we took it from.
Doesn't that get us some like complicated situations when parents don't have one of the ones that is provided? And then it's the burden of the district to decide whether something is valid or not?
It could certainly result that way. But I think what PDE tries to do is, I mean, there are at least seven options there. So they they try to make it inclusive enough that someone would have at least one of those items.
But that that phrase, though, is required now for us to use?
That is a part of of PDE's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment on the the paragraph, the students experiencing homelessness, the the rest of that paragraph is not, doesn't use that sort of phraseology. So refers to homeless students. So I guess just making that consistent.
Yeah, there I would suggest students experiencing homelessness or other educational instability. But in that section, too, that it begins with the board is committed to facilitating. That reads more like a policy statement instead of an AR. ARs are directing the administration, the district on on taking action. So if, since this is contained in the AR, I would change the orientation of that to the district or the administration.
How about shall? Shall?
Shep.
Shall.
I I I don't know where shall would go in that sentence. But yeah, instead of focusing on the board and our commitment, the board's commitment, I would change the orientation to the district or administration and how this is part of their administrative regulations.
Right, my, what I'm saying, Ms. Wedeman, is that what we'll say is that they shall, they shall be enrolled.
Okay.
Is that?
And just get rid of the beginning part of that whole sentence.
Yes.
And then just a point of clarification, since this is an AR, are we just commenting on it? This does not need to come back for the three reads and policy adoption, right? Because it's just the AR that can be more simply changed?
That's correct. Are there any other questions, mayor's input or considerations for policy two hundred, the AR associated with policy two hundred? And then the third policy we're discussing tonight is policy two zero two, which relates to the eligibility of non-resident students. And this discussion is centered around both the policy and the associated AR with it.
I just have the same comment about under six, there it says homeless students. So you should either use experiencing homelessness or to be consistent with the other.
If I recall from prior policy discussions, we were trying to intentionally use students experiencing homelessness versus laboring them as a homeless student, so.
For the benefit of the public, could we also get clarification on when non-resident students are eligible? Because I know there are certain provisions where we do provide an education. I just want to make sure there's not some misconception that we are just educating any out of district student who comes to our doors.
We can, we can certainly take a look at that and make that.
I mean, like, is someone prepared to share that this evening? Like, an example could be a student experiencing homelessness, a student whose family, maybe there's a family separation, there's a residence in one. Like, there's this, there's situations that I just want us to be clear about.
There's a number of typically, right, students who live within the district are residents of our district and they are enrolled unless they choose to reside elsewhere. There are certain circumstances where they be legal, familiar or familial, whatever it may be, that may require us to enroll a student who is a non-resident due to that situation. I think a lot of that may speak to, you know, what was mentioned tonight with students experiencing homelessness or potential instability within the household or even within legal circumstances, instances, as well as international exchange students, things like that. So it is not often, but there are circumstances that may require us to do so.
Thank you for that clarification.
In the AR of this one, there is a section on and the verification of student residency. And we should be adding, since it is district policy, the practice of confirming ver, verifying or confirming residency for the rising sixth and ninth graders.
Yeah, I I was actually going to mention that, too. That's a situation where we do confirm residency for students moving into sixth grade, moving into ninth grade, those transition grades. So it would be beneficial to note that in the policy as that is a common term. Well, that not a common, it is common, but it's a current practice that we employ.
I had a question on the the minor student who's eligible for educational services and is confined confined to an adult local correctional institution. Falling conviction, that that paragraph, does, does the correctional institution have to be local? Do they just have to be a resident? And if they're convicted, they, I'm just curious about. Says we should, we shall, they shall receive educational services from the district, but we don't have any adult local correctional.
That, Dr. Shelton, that's, that's correct. So the the intent of that and the update was, it's from code. So we did add it. If your situation changed, it would be applicable here, but it it's not applicable here, given that we don't have a facility.
If it's outside our boundaries, the correctional institution is outside our boundaries. It only applies if it's within the district boundaries.
My understanding is that was the intent of this, this, this particular edition.
I'm wondering if it's the paragraph that starts, if upon official action of the board towards the bottom, so to speak, where the continues, the students will be dropped in the district's roles. Instead of dropped, are we able to use removed?
Yeah, that's, I'm good with that.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I agree. And also just for public awareness, if there would arise a situation where it's determined that a student isn't eligible, there is a fairly lengthy process that we go through to be sensitive to family needs. I believe we discussed this earlier in August at one of our meetings. Lengthy progress to to verify that, be sensitive to those family or student needs and take every possible step to make sure that we can enroll them. There does sometimes arise a situation where they no longer live within the district or things like that. And that's essentially what that pertains to. And I do think drop, removed is a better verbiage.
And I think along with that, it's important to comment that when it's time for those residencies to be re-verified, there's a series of reminders and communications that's got out to the public. That way, no one is accidentally removed from the the roster just because they potentially missed the email or missed the notification.
Yes, that's correct. We do individual check-ins, working with the family individually and things like that as well. I don't know if there's any other discussion or input on policy two oh two or two oh two associated administrative regulation. Just if I can note for all three policies and ARs, if we can just make sure that all of them have the most recent citations and codes associated with them, so that's updated and accurate as well. Is there other discussion on two oh two, two hundred or one thirty-seven? Okay, so each each work session, each session will go through policy. We'll continue to revise these. I believe one thirty-seven, the intent will be to come back in the next meeting with the first read. And then administratively, we will work on the ARs as well. And we'll continue with that policy review calendar we provided to make sure that what we're reviewing is timely and impactful to student and board and district operations.
Right, so personality?
I'm sorry. We do. We have a psychologist intern contract for approval. This relates back to the discussion we had, I believe in August with the University of Buffalo and making sure that we're able to provide services to students with that psych intern. It was also the attached appendix D, which is being put forth, being recommended to be put forth for action at the next meeting on October twenty-third. So this is really just more of an informational item, just to note that it is related to the University of Buffalo psych intern contract. And we were able to get further details and put that forth for action at the next meeting.
Thank you. We'll continue on to four B with the finance committee, Dr. Shelton.
Thank you, Dr. King. For discussion information tonight, we have a couple of items. The first one is an asset disposal, which the information provided here, we are donating textbooks to St. Andrew and St. Pius. And maybe I would look to a little bit more context around.
Sure, with the support of this wonderful board, we were able to purchase new replacement science kits for our elementary level as well as our middle school and refresh some of the textbooks at the high school. Many thanks to our teachers who are learning and implementing those new kits this year. And at the elementary have been doing that for the last couple of years. And so we were thrilled, we always attempt to donate any materials that are no longer in use due to a refresh or replenishment. And we were just thrilled that anyone would take some of them for use. And so we have found that to be the case for some of these texts. And in the case where we cannot find somewhere to donate, we do look for a responsible disposal of those items.
Great, thank you. I just would like to note these are three thousand textbooks, so.
Lots of learning.
Any discussion, any other discussion on the textbook donation?
Just wanted to remind the public that the new resources we were able to purchase for science and that we're implementing now thanks to our teachers, that those are actually aligned to the new state standards for PA Steel. So our students are getting the most current, state-of-the-art standards and content in terms of science instruction.
No other comments on that item? The next two items are related. Basically relates to obtaining food service, kitchen equipment and a process that in which we want to resolicit. So if I could look to the business office to provide an update on.
So I believe what happened with the bid is that when the bid was due in on Thursday.
Yeah, could you use your mic?
The, the, um, the bid was due by two PM on Thursday and the three of the bids were received on Friday morning. And so they did, Tony decided through conversations with the solicitor that the best thing to do would be to avoid those and reprocess, reopen the bid and give those people who had, um, given, made the attempt to bid, give them a chance to rebid when it was reopened, to let them know that we were reprocessing them. Because there wasn't, no one had replied in time.
Okay. And what was this, I I guess just a point of clarification was, what was the confusion over the time submission?
I I believe that the time was announced, but with, I don't know whether it was mail, whatever. They weren't there on Thursday at two PM, they came sometime on Friday. So technically they were late and couldn't be considered.
Okay, thank you. Comments or information?
Just as you mentioned, they're connected, the connection between the two, the rejection and the resolicitation of. Part of that also with issue throughout the conversation of being able to deliver the bids from the perspective vendor. So just opening up time. So just opening up time for people to rebid and provide that opportunity for everyone who is interested in providing the service to do so.
No other comments? I will turn it back to Dr. King.
Great, thank you. That takes us to item 4C, facilities, Ms. Miederman?
There are several items for facilities tonight. One is a construction update for Chatham Park and Cooper Town. And I see our crew coming on down. The agenda, it did include several packets of information, one on Cooper Town, one on Chatham Park, that included pictures and updates.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So we're here just to give a little update on the project. So Chatham Park at this point is done. Oh, thank you for making that a little bigger. So we got the certificate of occupancy right at the end of August. School started as planned. You know, there were still a few things that weren't done, but over the last five or six weeks, we've been working diligently to try and get punch lists done, any loose ends done. I'd say they're probably about 80% there at this point. So when the building opened, the cafeteria, cafeteria opened, but the kitchen was not done. So just a few weeks of catering from the high school. So then the kitchen was completed and opened a week and a half, two weeks ago at this point, so it's fully operational. The gym, as we had mentioned, they've continued working on that. It actually is moving along very well. We're hoping in two weeks or less that the gym will be able to be open, certainly by the end of the month at the absolute latest. So that, that was kind of one of the last, last things standing, knowing that that wasn't going to get done over the summer. And then the exterior work, you know, you'll, you'll see here with some pictures, but getting that site cleaned up, again, they're actually going to be hydro seating tomorrow, getting that done. So from a punch list standpoint, as I said, you know, the architect, Jeff and his team has put together the punch list, which is just all the little loose ends, you know, touch-up paint, caulk, fix, fix this item that's not working. So we're working through that list. It was a few hundred items, crossing it off day by day. So we are really getting down to it at this point. And then at the middle school, that also received, the cafeteria addition received occupancy at the end of August, that was ready for the start of school. So now, at this point, we're just trying to close out paperwork. There's a lot of that to do. You'll see, you know, obviously getting to final pay apps. We don't, you know, money's held until all the punch list is done and every last little paperwork is provided. So, and then we have a budget summary here at the end. So we just wanted to share a few pictures. So this is the front of the building, the big pile of dirt's gone. That's all cleaned up, and finally get that, as I said, seeded tomorrow. Here's the new kitchen, you know, all the new equipment that's in. There's a new cafeteria, you got some nice graphics that the architect worked with the school on. New serving line here in the kitchen. There's a gym floor going in, it's amazing. I mean, they put, three workers put that floor in in about two days. So it's really coming together quickly. Here's your, you know, the new grand lobby. If you haven't been there, it's really impressive. You know, Jeff and his team did a fabulous job. You have the learning stair over here on the right. This is a new library, so you have kind of a classroom section here, and then you have, the other half is the, is the library with housing all the books. Then this is one of those open classrooms where we rip down the wall of an existing room, so this can be a collaborative type space used for all kinds of different teaching. And then here's a typical classroom, you know, all new floors, all new casework, the new 75-inch smart boards up front for the teachers, so they're all new throughout the building. Just another typical classroom, you know, with all new casework, et cetera. And then at the middle school, so one of the things, you know, spruced up the faculty lounge, which was used as part of the cafeteria. So it got some new furniture here and a little bar sit-down for the teachers for lunch. And then, you know, you have the 2,500 square foot addition with, you know, another 16 tables in there for Dan and his staff to really help spread the students out and function as needed. And then, kind of looks like a little, little thing out there, but it's half-buried in the ground, but that's the exterior view of the cafeteria, getting that area cleaned up and just kind of shoehorning it down into that, what was that old plaza, outdoor plaza? Well, and it's hard to see here, but if you could zoom in on that a little bit, please. But as you know, we've been presenting the project budget.
Ken, this is the same document members have on page 14?
This is the...
Just for reference?
The, the only thing was a couple of pictures were added of the middle.
Got it.
That's the only thing that was missing in the previous version. So everything's the same. So the, I mean, the bottom line is, as you know, we've been transferring contingency money from Cooper Town to Chatham. Right now, it's, it's looking like, you know, somewhere $20,000 to $30,000 left of that contingency. So I would, as I mentioned at the last meeting, assume it's all going to be spent, probably 95% there auditing all the change orders that have been submitted, all the costs to the district, and just, you know, really weeding through it. But it's going to basically be right around that $400,000 at this point that's spent. So are there any, any questions?
I just had a comment. I, township, Haverford Township Day was last weekend, and, you know, people are very impressed with the renovation. They really, the lobby is quite, quite impressive. I had some comments.
It's good to hear.
And I assume there are people here that are at Chatham, so hopefully. Perhaps give a round of applause for the project.
I would say also at Haverford Township Day, we talked, I talked to a lot of kids that were very eager for the gym to be finished. So that's countdown of two weeks now.
One of the kids came in the first day, goes, "This place is fire." All right. Well, we also have an update here for Cooper Town. All right. So as part of Cooper Town's project, there was a little renovation to the front lobby of Oakmont, sprucing up the entrance, making it a lot more welcoming. That's just about wrapping up this week, hoping to be moved in, in the next week. So that's, just was a little add alternate that was accepted to the contracts. So I think that really will, will make Oakmont very, very welcoming. I think everybody will be very happy with it. Then as far as the project itself, things are really moving along. So you have three additions to the building. The front addition is well underway. Foundations are done, even all the rear two additions, the foundations are done. So really, the biggest milestone right now is steel is coming next week. So we're coordinating that with Beth and her staff. And, you know, you'll see that go up pretty quickly over just a three, four-day period. And then the rear additions, it's, really the goal is over the next six to eight weeks to get them enclosed and weather tight. So they're moving along well, no real concern right now. A few things is always probably a little behind where we want them to be, but there's no indication, and they're all good contractors that we've worked with before, so things are moving along well.
Can you speak to how that's being managed with school in session?
Sure. So the nice part actually is, other than the front, so there was a large cattle chute built in the front of the building to the main entrance, because the new addition encapsulates that whole front area. So it's fully, you know, plywood, all roofed in, very well separated. And the workers really, you know, are all within fenced-in areas. So the bulk of the work is really in the back, which is just completely separate, and there's no work going on in the school right now. There will potentially be some work done at night here and there, similar to what was done at Chatham. But really, during the school year, there's no real, you know, workers walking through the building. That's the one, Chatham was a little bit more of that, this, the phasing worked a little better for separation that way. So during the steel, we'll have to do a few logistical changes, but that's only for a couple of days. So overall, it's, it's working out well. So then, so here are just some pictures. This is the front, this is part of the front addition that you can see over here. There's the cattle chute on the right to the main entrance. To the left is the auditorium, where, you know, windows have been cut out. They're going to be pouring the concrete floor in there, that becomes the library. And then this is one of the additions. You can see all the underground plumbing, et ceteras, installed, all the, and now this floor is poured already. Here they are pouring the concrete floor. So it is, and the weather has been very helpful, of course, since we've had almost no rain. So they've been able to work pretty much every day. And then this is the second addition closer to Cooper Town Road. So. And then, you know, as far as contingency is concerned for Cooper Town, there it is, thank you. You know, we, so you've been updated here, so the budget's been reduced by the $400,000. And right now, you're out of the $900,000 contingency, we still have a balance of, just shy of $850,000. So, you know, we're out of the ground, where we always talk about that risk. So, and we've caught, as we said, a lot of things after doing Chatham. So we feel comfortable with where this contingency is at, at this point. Any questions about Cooper Town?
Ken, just going back to Oakmont, can you just give a little, this is my understanding, I was looking at it yesterday with JR, that interior also is going to improve the registration, enrollment, taxpayer office, as we're all correct?
Correct. Yeah, so there'll be a tax window. You'll come into the vestibule up front, and there's a tax window on the right, so a pass-through. So for those quick transactions, rather than so, you know, I think it was what, 3,000, 4,000 people, you know, that came walk through. So that will improve that a lot. And then you'll have the main admin to, for other, you know, business in the district for people to come in. It's a secure vestibule, so it's set up a lot better than it was.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Just want to give a shout-out to our taxpayers for the public investment that we've been able to make in our facilities, to ensure that our students have optimal learning spaces, but also that our teachers and our staff have high-quality workspaces as well. It really is just, it makes a difference when you have a space you feel comfortable in, you have the resources that you need. And it's exciting just to see that we're able to have more equity across our elementary schools in terms of getting them up to date, because some of them were quite outdated. Yeah, so it's, it's exciting.
And it gets rid of the modular trailers, everybody's inside.
Yes.
And everybody has a classroom.
Yep.
So that, that was a big part of it.
Yep, thanks for helping us get that done.
Do you have a overall schedule that you can give us enough to comment for Cooper Town?
Sure, I'm sorry. So for Cooper Town, so there's some phasing similar. So the first phase is to get the additions done by spring break, similar to what we were trying to accomplish at Chatham. Then there'd be a move over spring break, and the whole kindergarten wing will take that over early, so we have more time instead of squeezing all the work down into the, all of next summer. So then the gym will be, gym work will start in May, a little early. The cafeteria will close down a few weeks early, similar to Chatham. And then next summer would be the balance of the existing classrooms to be done. So the front administration area, they'll move into the lot, new library temporarily from spring break through the end of the school year. So that's really the only phasing. It's not too much. We tried to really limit it to one move for everyone, so that, you know, the children are only moving once, and admin's only moving once. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. Little displacement, but there's always some when you do a renovation, so.
Well, we appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into keeping the site safe, but also keeping it functional and, and operating as a school, and hopefully not too many distractions for the students and staff at Cooper Town as the building is going on around them.
And despite the reduction in the, or the movement of some of the money from down to Chatham, you're comfortable with where we are, with the amount of the city that we have left for Cooper Town?
Yes, at this point, yes.
Because the underground's done?
Underground is pretty much 100% done. Few, a few minor things, but yeah, it's done.
So that's always the, underground's always the, all the issues. So for above ground, now it's?
Yeah.
It's good, okay. And, and, and the concrete pouring and everything, it has to be done by usually November, November that's been completed now as well?
All foundations are done, just waiting on the last little bit of slab on grade to pour, which will be done in the next week, week, two weeks. So really, all the concrete work is, is pretty much done.
Okay. The, the next item on the agenda is for the middle school wrestling room. Is that something that you're also talking to?
No, I don't know who's giving up there. I think we're done.
Okay. Well, then, thank you for coming tonight and for the updates.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Brandon.
So the, the middle school wrestling room, this is something that had been proposed and discussed at a earlier Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, and now it looks like it's back because we'll be able to take action on it at the next board meeting. So this is just an update or refresh of a contribution from Miller Flooring of some mats for our middle school gym, and no charge for that, a value of $33,000 donation. And then there's some charges here for the installation, and we're going to be able to reuse and repurpose some other mats to fill out the walls and finish up a new and improved wrestling room. Dr. Hayes, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you captured it. We discussed this previously. At the time we discussed it, we didn't have a quote for the installation. So as you mentioned, large thanks to Miller for donating those mats. It is a, it would have been a $30,000, $33,000 cost occurrence for us, so we are receiving those donated, and like you said, no charge. And it is a good update for, for the school, for that room. Those mats severely deteriorated. We have community groups that also use that room and those mats as well. So this is an ongoing thing now that we have a quote. That quote's being provided for the board to have an idea of the financial contribution to consider for the October 23rd action meeting.
Any comments or questions? Then the next item, moving on to three, is some donation proposals for, from a food drive and for a free outdoor library at Chestnut. Dr. Hayes, do you have anything to add on those?
Yeah, again, these are also both just informational for the board. As it states there, we have some donations coming as it relates to a food drive, and also to put up a free outdoor library for the Chestnut Wald Elementary School. So again, we're happy to get those donations to us, to help serve our students, our staff, our community members. Just giving the board the update on that information for upcoming action later.
All right, and thank you to the community members who think of contributing to our schools. And that is the end of the facilities agenda. I will turn it back to Dr. King. Thank you, Ms. Miederman. That takes us to Academic and People's Services. Dr. Larson?
Thank you, Dr. King. First on our agenda for this evening, we have a federal programs overview. I'll turn it to Ms. Saxa and her team for that update.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Larson. And Ms. Carter is going to come up and give us an overview of our federal programs proposed spending for the year.
Okay, thank you. Are you, are you going to put it up? Or no? If not, I can go ahead. I think they all have it on their computers. So I'm happy to be able to come before you this evening with the federal program overview. I believe you should all have it on Board Docs if they can't get it up. I'm bringing before you the preliminary allocation. As you know, from previous years, we get a preliminary allocation... I'm bringing before you the preliminary allocation. As you know, from previous years, we get a preliminary allocation at the beginning. And then they give us a final allocation, which is often a minor increase or decrease between the different grants. About January, February, but sometimes the timeline shifts on us. So we never know what's going on. But I'm glad to be able to come before you with all four of our title grants. As you know, there was a delay in the distribution of our funding. So I'm coming to you a little bit later than when I normally would. The application ended up being completed, the due date was September 30th instead of the normal August 30th. So that's the delay in bringing it before you. So first for our title grants, we have a total allocation of $213,444. That's separated into two areas. So that's the school district's allocation, which we use for salaries and benefits of our two title identified schools. So we have two schools that are identified as targeted assistance, which is Lynnwood and Manoa. And we split the fund proportionately between the two schools based off of who is identified for free and reduced lunch, which we consider our fund generators. But I always like to be clear, that does not mean those are the students who receive the services. So they're not the same as the service receivers, but that's how we get our funds generated. So we also use additional funding for parent and family engagement, which we're required to do within our schools. The remainder goes towards what we call our set asides. Thank you. Goes towards our set asides, which we have to put aside for, they use the term homeless, but students who are temporarily unhoused. So we set aside for that student supplies, transportation if needed, and any federal program conferences or travel that has to be done. The next part is for our non-public allocation. We are required to set aside funds due to what is called equitable shares. So if we have students who reside within our targeted assistance school catchment area, which would be if they lived in Lynnwood and Manoa and they qualify as free or reduced lunch within their non-public schools within our area, they, those schools qualify for being able to utilize our, the federal dollars that come to the district because those students still do belong to us within our community. So we work with those schools. I visit them. I monitor what type of academics are occurring. They do a great job with the students, but they do get a share. So this year, we have two non-public schools and those funds are sent through the DCIU. And then DCIU provides reading specialists to be able to come out and work with the students at the schools. Then we have our Title II, which is for professional development with a total of $101,752. And that is often, we use it for, with Ms. Saxa's office. She does a lot of that work. We use a lot of it for salary and benefits and stipends. And a lot of it is around our strategic goals, technology mentors, and other initiatives of professional developments that our teachers can utilize to further their learning for the classroom. We also have to provide for this to our non-public schools as well. This year, we have five non-public schools and they have to use it for non-secular nature of professional learning. And they reach out to us and we're keeping that in-house again this year to save on costs with the IU. So it at least reduces what we have to give out. For Title III, that is for our English language learners or multilingual learners. We go through consortium with the IU for that based off of the amount, which many districts do. And that provides us with services throughout the year for our families of our students. They also provide some three-week summer camp programs and any family engagement pieces that need to be done. As of right now, we don't have any identified that we know of students in non-public schools for this. And then our Title IV is actually transferred into our Title I funds. So that we're able to extend those funds to make sure that we could provide as many services as we can to the students within our two targeted assistance schools. So that's a quick overview. Any questions?
Just a really quick question. I think I missed it when you first started talking. This is the funds that have been allocated for us, but when do we actually receive the funds?
So we actually do that quarterly. So we actually do with the help of Mr. Tasta and Mrs. McWilliams. We sit down quarterly and go through and look at what we've spent. And then we submit for reimbursement quarterly for that. Due to the fact that the grant started a little bit later, we were informed that we won't get that same quarterly reimbursement yet because your application has to be approved in the full process. And it takes a little bit for that process to go through for PDE. But we'll be in the second quarter of what they're considering where we get that reimbursement of funds and we'll get everything from the back to.
So from, from the first section that we weren't reimbursing to be at the second? Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Question. Knowing that budget season is coming up in the next few months, do we have any word on the status of these funds in future years? I know there was some uncertainty this year. Funds were released. Do we have any updates?
Not that I can speak to now. I wish I had a crystal ball and can say, we will absolutely have the funds for the future. But we always wait to see. We know that Title I is governed by Congress. So we can pretty much count on our Title I funds. It is our other area of funding, which is actually up in the air, which we always have to wait. And because they're pass-through funds from the federal government through the state, we have to wait and see what that process is. And then PDE informs us when the allocation, when they get their final allocation, what the amount might be.
Just on that, could you, and I know we've talked about this, but just for the benefit of the board and the public, could you just give any context as to how these funds have compared to years past? Or if we expect any potential impact due to the new free and reduced lunch requirements?
So right now, we actually look pretty good when it comes to our funding. So we are okay when it comes to Title I funds right now. I can't say when our final allocation comes. But right now, when we ran our preliminary one, we use October 1 count, which we just hit the October 1. We look at the enrollment, who has applied for free and reduced lunch, and we use those numbers. Right now, our numbers actually look pretty strong to be consistent. So we use the numbers from the prior year. So this year's numbers are from the 2024 October 1 count that we use for this. And so this year's will be for the next year. So we're always working in several years in federal funds. So you've just got to remember what year it is when you get given that. You're welcome.
Just to comment that this is a lot of programming, a lot of important services. And appreciate that the federal government sees these as essential to the quality programs and services we offer. But $356,000, you're, you really need to stretch it and work it to meet all the goals.
We do. We, we get what we have, but we have the same requirements as any other district who might receive more than what we do. But we have some amazing teachers and reading specialists who do their work at our two schools. And they make sure that they get as many students as they can in so that they can get the intervention. And I will tell you, we monitor their progress throughout the year. They're moving kids out and getting some more kids in and constantly going through it. So we really have a strong team that's able to do this work. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Next, we have the AI update.
I'll just introduce them as they're coming down. We have Mrs. Meredith Hearn and Mr. Rob Anderson, both of whom have been taking us through our tech plan updates and now are going to be providing one specific to artificial intelligence.
Thank you. So we're just going to, we're going to give you a quick update. We gave a couple of updates last year in our progress through implementing AI in the district. So today, we're here to give you an update on kind of where we are now and where we're looking to go as the school year begins. We just wanted to start with just kind of reminding everyone what our, the working group came up with our core beliefs around AI. And that's kind of where we start from with everything that we're doing, making sure that it's human-centered. AI is not replacing humans. It's enhancing education. We're going to continually, because AI is evolving, we're continually, continuing to evaluate how we use AI and how it can be used in our schools. And then we're ensuring that our students are learning responsible ways to use AI as they go through Havreford.
So we've already begun implementing some trainings as we talked about last year, I believe in the winter. We spoke to you about some of the AI 101 trainings that were happening. All schools at this point, all seven schools, all the faculties have gone through what we call AI 101, which is where we talked about the vision and the mission of AI at Havreford. It's where we created the guidelines and guardrails for use of AI with teachers. And where we presented that human in the loop framework that all our teachers would be used, just expressing that they are ultimately responsible for any AI output that they create. So all schools and all staff have had that training. Then over the course of kind of the end of the school year last year and the beginning this year, I've had a chance to meet individually with content groups at the middle school and high school, a few of them already. And those will continue where I've gotten to show them how to use specific AI tools to assist in their particular content, how it can help them in their teaching and productivity. So those have been really great conversations around what that can mean for them and their students in their classrooms. And those will hopefully continue throughout the rest of the year with a few of the content areas I have not gotten to meet yet. Over the summer, I had a chance to do an AI training with all admin staff at the admin summer learning. We talked about, again, a brief overview of the AI 101 to make sure all administrative staff, whether in a building or not, was aware of the mission and vision here at Havreford with AI. And those guardrails and guidelines we're putting in place, as well as that human in the loop framework. And then I went over some productivity tools with them as well that they could use, again, whether in the building, out of a building. Gamma was a big hit. And we talked about Magic School and Canva as well, some tools that they could use in their jobs.
So when, when we've come before, we've talked about this timeline as far as how we've been implementing AI and kind of where we're going as we go through this. As you can see, we've kind of moved into that, that fourth step now where we're starting to look at the tools that we're using around AI and starting to try and decide if we need to pare it down to just a few select tools or kind of what our plan is there. Also a footnote on here, just as we were talking about policy earlier. Last summer, we adopted the AR for our acceptable use policy that was specific to AI. We don't at this time feel that there's any need to make any updates or changes to that. But, you know, again, with that constant review, we'll, we'll look at that as the year goes on to see if there's any changes needed this year or next. As I mentioned, kind of where we are in our process was now to start thinking about whether we need to go from just having all AI tools open for our teachers to maybe considering focusing our training and other such things on, on just one or two platforms. A few of the reasons we'd want to do that is, is again, focusing professional development and communication with teachers. One of the things we heard through the CCIU instructional audit that we had a couple of springs ago was that some teachers felt overwhelmed with the number of choices and would prefer to have it narrowed down to a few select tools and, and better training and communication around those. Additionally, the potential of purchasing a tool comes from the desire to have better and stronger privacy concerns, privacy agreements with the company. For most free tools, those privacy agreements are pretty loose. As we start to engage with the company and purchase, and potentially purchase something from them, we get a contract that includes privacy protections for the data that we're using. Currently with free tools, you don't, you don't know what they're doing with that data potentially. They could be selling it or using it to train their own tools. Whereas when we start to purchase something, we get those tighter privacy restrictions that everyone likes. And then lastly, most of the AI tools, when you potentially purchase them, allow you to customize prompts and tools specific to your organization. So we can give them details that would be specific to Havreford. So content that it's generating would be follow our guidelines or specific things that are important to us, like strategic goals and things like that that could be implemented, lesson plan templates, all those kinds of things that we have already in the district so that we're not getting content generated that then has to be modified into the Havreford formats.
And now looking forward to this school year, we want to make sure that every student that goes through Havreford School District is not just AI aware, but is AI literate. So we want to roll out a series of student lessons around AI literacy. And so we're hoping to start those, it says winter 2025. I'm thinking kind of the end of November, once classes are comfortably in session. We're going to start with the middle school and high school because that's where we're going to start to, as we begin to open AI tools. They would begin at the high school and kind of work their way down. So we're not looking at elementary just yet. So we currently have five AI literacy lessons designed for students to receive this year at the middle school and high school level, starting from what is AI, how does AI work, the bias and ethics in AI, the environmental impact of AI. And then of course, AI at SDHT, which that's where they're going to receive that kind of AI 101 training about policies and procedures, guardrails and guidelines of AI at Havreford and specific plagiarism issues. You know, and we talked about the A15 AR there. So we're going to make sure all students have that kind of base knowledge of AI, what it is and how it will be appropriately used at Havreford, as well as that red, yellow, green traffic light protocol that we've talked about with faculty already. We have a few AI tools that have been piloted or used in certain classrooms. School AI is one that we've had a couple of teachers request to use at the high school level. So we're kind of testing out the waters there. The nice thing about that tool is that teachers can monitor all of the AI interaction that the students have with the tool. So we really like the idea of those teachers kind of being able to sneak behind the curtain of the AI and make sure that the students are using it appropriately. We're also noticing more and more of our ed tech providers integrating an AI agent into the ed tech tools our students are already using, like CK, CK 12 and Canva. Both have AI agents now. So it just kind of reminds us of the importance of getting our students ready to use AI in the classroom because more and more of our ed tech tools are introducing these AI agents and they're not going to stop and they're not going to go away. So we want to get this started this winter to get our students prepared as they start to see these tools and know how to use them appropriately. Any questions?
I just want to clarify. So in the slide before, you're talking about choosing a program. So what, like, does that mean that we're choosing something to be able to purchase into? Or, because are the ones that we're currently using ones that are free to use?
Yeah, currently the, all the AI tools that we're using in the district are free. We haven't paid anything for any AI tools yet. And that's where we're looking, you know, the intent with the working group was to let people kind of explore, see what tools worked and didn't work within the, the district and classes and things like that. And then to move into a place where we would have some information about what teachers want from an AI tool to allow us to maybe potentially pick one or two platforms that meets those needs.
And you mentioned training and the guardrails. And I'm assuming some of that is what you've already come to us with earlier. But would you mind sharing that with us again? You don't, I don't need to put you on the spot right now, but like, just so that we're reminded again about what those guardrails are, whether it's via email or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. And a lot of that is that human in the loop framework about teachers having oversight over every level of kind of the input to the AI, the output of the AI, and how they kind of use that in front of the students and how that ultimately is their work in front of the students. And so I can certainly share the presentation again if you want to see the whole explanation of it. But that's ultimately what we're talking about is making sure it is, that we're not having any issues with bias or ethics, false outputs, hallucinations, and that it is, in this case, the student's own creation or the teacher's own creation with assistance from the AI. It should be their own kind of thought content and not from the AI. So those are kind of the guardrails and guidelines we're looking at.
And I just, for my own sake, would really appreciate seeing the lessons that you have, especially around the environmental impact. I, I was, I was pleased to see that that is there. And I, I know I might be a broken record, but I just feel like it's important for me to continue to say, at the higher ed level, I'm really concerned about what we're seeing coming out of students and graduating and coming into higher ed and their inability to do research. So while I appreciate that we're doing guardrails, I really need us to be careful. Because I want all of our students to actually ready to critically think at the higher level.
And that's why we're talking about AI literacy. I feel like the students need to have, instead of just an understanding of what it is and how to use it, a deeper kind of appreciation for what it can do for them versus what it should be doing for them. So we're talking about AI as an assistant and a thought partner, not as a content creator. So that's what we're trying to stress with the kid.
I have a question about privacy. I mean, we're using free tools to determine what may work for us. Did we talk about privacy concerns with?
Yeah. So, so part of the AI 101 that Meredith was mentioning talks about, and same with the AR, goes into what information should not be provided into an AI tool. So privacy, personal information is never provided. Anything that could narrow it down to even just one student is never provided. We don't provide student data into an AI tool. So those are all things that were covered as part of the AI 101. And that makes its way into the student lessons as well, that they shouldn't be providing any of that information for themselves or sharing, you know, kind of oversharing with, with the AI agent as they go through, you know, potentially working with it as well.
Some of these free resources that we're using, have we looked into, you know, are we providing them data, right, on how we're using these resources? And, you know, what we've decided to use and what we've decided not to use?
Yeah, I think we're down, we hear from our teachers that we're down to a small handful of tools. At the end of the day, yes, of course, any website that you're using, you're providing them some data about how you're using that tool, paid or not. We're just not sure with the free ones, you know, the discussion sometimes comes down to how are they using some of the other data, like training models and things like that? It's usually the big one that a lot of companies use the data we're sharing with them. So our teachers and students are going to be instructed, our teachers were instructed, our students will be instructed not to share the personal information, but there is still some data they'll get from us about how we're using it.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think about the cookies, right? And so like, every time we log in, are we giving them information about, you know, trends or things that are important to us? Like, what are we giving away for this free, you know, resource?
I see what you're saying, and that's where the discussion comes into, is trying to narrow it down to just, you know, maybe one or two AI tools that kind of fit the needs of everybody so that we can get those tighter data privacy restrictions around the tools that we are using and kind of weed out some of the ones that we're not sure how they're using our data.
I'd like to clarify, when we're talking about AI use, we're talking about large language models or primary?
Yeah, it's kind of made that jump over the past, you know, probably three or four years. When people say AI, we're talking about the large language models. Obviously, AIs existed for decades at this point. So we're referring exclusively to large language models right now.
I do appreciate the work that you and your team have put into this. Also getting teacher feedback, stakeholder input into this. I mean, it's so important that our students are becoming, or learning to become responsible users of AI because if they don't have access to AI, or we're just looking at it in terms of disciplinary terms, terms of did you cheat or did you not, they're going to leave our school system not being as prepared as some of their peers who are getting education around AI. So I know we're all kind of learning and wading our way through this, but I appreciate the work that you all have undertaken and how you've gotten our teachers, worked with our teachers to begin to implement this with our students. I also appreciate that we're moving toward a paid resource, just from the security aspect. And also, there's some inequities in terms of like, what a free AI resource provides versus the paid one. So you're actually getting a different quality of information where you're paying into a resource. So I just think overall that will be better for all of us. One other thing I did want to bring up in terms of the AI lesson topics, I really appreciate the topics that you've outlined. I've been reading more articles about like the sycophantic tendencies of AI. Be like, oh, you know, you're right, that's wonderful. I do like coaxing people and persuading them in very disturbing ways. So I just want to suggest that there's some social emotional component as it relates to AI. I don't know if it's working with the counseling team, school psychologists, just to make sure that that piece is also addressed.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I did want to note, and I appreciated in the presentation, you mentioning the policy, and as of right now, there's no update that needed. As you were presenting, I was looking at our policy currently. And there is mention relates to privacy and, you know, what, how AI is used within our school district and what parameters are set into place. And I would just ask that as you're continuing to explore, if you do find that there's updates that's needed with our policy, I want to make sure that we're being consistent and that we are certainly providing the protection to our students and, you know, our teachers and staff, as well as our own internet systems that we have in place. So I appreciate you being mindful of the policy, and I would just ask you continue to keep us updated.
That's a question, because we're at the end now of this, of the working group, really. We're kind of at that last stage of it. At the end of the day, are we going to, we've sent us with a few different tools to look at. Are we going to choose like one or two for the district? Why are they going to be different based on both curriculum or have we gotten to that point yet?
So the next step is to start having the, to have the working group reconvene and start to talk about that and kind of come up with a game plan there. Probably part of that will be discussing what tools they're seeing themselves and peers, colleagues using throughout the school and kind of looking at what those tools do and provide and why they're using those tools. That'll help us to come up with kind of some criteria to then maybe start evaluating tools and deciding whether, kind of what our next direction is. But that's, that's kind of the goal of the working group, is to kind of figure that out as we go along.
Okay, appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, last, last May, I believe, I attended a legislative breakfast where they had students from districts from all over the county, and they had their own working group, actually. And while, and a lot of people are very concerned about AI, I have my concerns about AI as well. One thing that, and students did as well, but one thing that they said to each person was that we get the concern with plagiarism with everything else, but we want to learn this. Like, we have to learn this pretty much. So I'm, you know, thrilled that this is happening. So I guess we'll get a timeline then for purchasing as well and ideas of the quality and everything else in the future.
Once we talk with the working group, we'll come, we can share what a timeline looks like.
And if there's a way to give some demonstrations of them during that time, that'd be great as well for to be able to see in action as well.
Not to bring a Luddite perspective to this, but do we really feel we need to purchase tools? Or what is the, I wanted to see the cost benefit.
And that's, and like I said, that's what we're going to kind of look at. And like I said, the concern just comes down to is most of the time when there is a free tool, they're making money somehow. The reality is that they're not doing it just out of the goodness of their heart. So kind of evaluating what the benefits are. And to your point, if the cost is very high and it doesn't seem like there's going to be, it's worth the, then we'll continue figuring out how to work the way we have been.
And is there positive feedback? I guess we have the audience here that these tools are, would be useful and that they find them useful?
We have, we have a number of teachers reaching out asking about different tools. We've had good attendance at all of the trainings we provided. The working group seems like they've been talking with colleagues. We heard that throughout last year, that people were reaching out to them about how they were using tools.
I just don't want to adopt AI, to adopt AI and start drafting emails back and forth.
No, understood, agreed.
There was a mention about the student lessons and maybe including some awareness about the social and emotional implications. I think another theme or concern around AI is just the way it's changing careers and workforce opportunities. I know that's a part of our curriculum as well. And thinking about the careers that we might be familiar with today, how those change in the futures, what opportunities there are. I think the other side of that, though, is lifting up and, and having a balanced focus on those things that can't at all be done by AI. Like, what is it with the human performance, human creativity, hands-on building and things like that? So just ask that as we are thinking about how this is changing the world of work and the careers that our kindergartners of today, the workforce that they'll enter. AI is important, but I think it also leads us to consider like, what are those special fields of discipline that are outside the bounds of AI that could never be replicated and need, need our lessons and preparation for students to be able to work in the AI-free zone of the careers?
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you so much. Okay, and next, for information purposes, we have four out-of-district placements that are proposed action items for the 1023 Board Action Meeting. Ms. Axe, is there any additional information to add to those?
There is not, thank you for asking.
If there are no other comments from the board or questions on academic and public services, I'll turn it back over to Dr. King.
Great, thank you. So if nothing listed under Section 5 for other items? For another, nothing listed under Section 5 for other items. Section 6, excuse me, the Report on Executive Sessions. So the Board met before tonight's meeting to receive an update from Council related to the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement, to discuss with Council a confidential personnel-related matter, to discuss with Council a personnel-related matter, related litigation matter in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, to discuss with Council a right-to-know related litigation matter in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, and to discuss with Council a matter of agency business that if discussed in public would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of information protected by law. Section 7, that takes us to the next opportunity for public comment. This section of public comment is, allows members of the community to give comment on any item that is, that may or may not be listed on the agenda for this evening. I just want to remind that there's a three-minute limit. At the start of your comments, the timer will start. At the end of that, I would ask for you to conclude your remarks. Please should state your name, confirm your residency. I'm going to start with the list that I have in front of me. All right, and so for the first person, I have Adam Mancarol.
All right, so good evening, Dr. King, Dr. Hayes, Board members and community members. On behalf of the HTEA and our teachers, I wanted to begin by expressing our profound gratitude to this community. Throughout these contract negotiations, the support that we felt from families, students, and neighbors has been deeply meaningful. When our teachers see yard signs, hear words of encouragement, and know that this community values their work, that matters. That recognition sustains us through the difficult moments of these negotiations. Our teachers do not enter this profession for accolades or easy paths. They do it because they believe in your children. But I'm here to tell you that recognition and being valued, genuinely valued, changes everything. It strengthens resolve. It reinforces commitment, and it reminds us why we do what we do. So again, thank you. Your support has carried us through, and it's mattered more than you realize. Now, as we look forward, I want to acknowledge the progress that we're making in these negotiations. We are having real, substantial conversations, and we see a path forward. However, I must be clear, progress requires sustained commitment and focus from both sides. We cannot afford to lose momentum or be, or become distracted. The work ahead demands that we stay dedicated to finding solutions that serve everyone, our teachers, our students, and our district. Here's why this matters beyond our negotiations. Great schools are built on great teachers. A school district's success is not measured solely in test scores, although we have some really good ones, or facilities, right? It's mattered, it's measured in the educators that we employ, the teachers who inspire critical thinking, who mentor struggling students, who stay late to help, who see potential in every child. That's what we're building here. When we have a contract that is fair, equitable, and competitive, we send a message to the best educators in the region. Come here and stay here. This district values your expertise and invests in your future. That's how we retain the experienced teachers who carry institutional knowledge and mentor new educators. That's how we attract talented young teachers who have options but choose to build their careers with us. A new contract just isn't about our current teachers, it's about the district's future. It's an investment in continued excellence and growth. So as we move forward together, let us honor the support this community has given us by staying focused, staying committed, and staying determined to reach an agreement that reflects the true value of our educators and the aspirations that we all share for our students.
So, so next up, next up we have Julie Myers. Julie Myers.
Julie Myers, 535 Brookline, have had three in the district, two remain. As a parent of this generation, I tell you, they are different, they are a different breed, growing up in the unknown. If you aren't in the arena working directly with them, you don't know the extremes to which I refer. Their childhoods and adolescence are unprecedented in some pretty horrifying ways. The people you aren't negotiating fairly with are the exact adults helping this community raise those kids. In real time, they are loving, correcting, and addressing a generational phenomenon that will be studied for decades. I, for one, am outgunned, outmanned, and need all the help I can get. I don't want good enough. I want the most talented, innovative, and loving teachers as partners because no previous rulebook apply. Since 2015, I have seen changes in curriculums, apps, tools, subscriptions, and pedagogy. While best practices and updated supplies are important, they are also the easiest part of education. We could have labs sponsored by NASA and taught by Nobelists, but if they can't break a concept down for kids to access, they aren't teaching. Baldwin himself could be upfront, but if he can't make it meaningful through the trauma and rising depression of these kids, he's useless. Education requires content experts, but even more, it demands excellence in the art of teaching. Here are dynamos. They teach theorems while signaling love to a kid who attempted suicide last night, managing triggers to four separate eating disorders, meeting 12 IEPs, addressing record anxiety disorders, and practicing surviving gunman. I'm not being dramatic, it's not even half of it. We have powerhouses on our payroll satisfying multifarious needs we can't fully grasp, all before second period, when they'll do it again for another room full of our kids. Is this every teacher? No, but it is enough. And if we aren't competitive with districts within driving distance, it is not the dynamos who will stay. You know that, it's basic. If you think a stellar education is expensive, you're going to be stunned by the cost of ignorance. We can't afford the community-wide consequences of this particular generation in the hands of overworked, underpaid, burnout adults. We not only need the best, we need them at their best. While we can't afford to pay these teachers what they deserve, we can afford to pay them what they are asking for. So stop the games and find the money. Take attendance, sand subscription, practice grammar without computer games, stop giving babies iPads, stop investing in AI tools for kindergartners, and give these gladiators what they are asking for. Because three times three remains nine without the fanfare. But this generation, compounded by your negligence, will never be the community we all want. Right now, this Board is negatively affecting the lives of our children. So if you think that the parents of this community are going, wait, yeah. So if you think that the parents of this community are going to get easier to ignore or more civil, you are out of your damn minds.
So next up, we have Allison Sing Sun. Allison Sing Sun. Next, we have Ryan Schatz.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Schatz, Haverfordtown resident, parent, and chartered financial analyst. Across Pennsylvania, teacher pay hasn't kept up with inflation while districts have built up billions in reserves. That same pattern exists here in Haverford. Since 2019, district reserves have grown by 14 million, while teacher pay has barely moved. The district's financial position is strong. Haverford's capital program was well timed. Bonds were issued and refinanced at low interest rates. Financial reports show consistent surpluses. rates, financial reports show consistent surpluses. In 2021, Moody's Investor Service upgraded Haverford to a AA2 credit rating, one of the best in Pennsylvania. That strength also reflects years of contracts and budgets that prioritized saving over compensation, made possible by teachers who carried more than their share. The district has the means to make pay competitive. It's a question of priorities, not affordability. Year after year, the district raises taxes near the legal limit, while teacher wages grow less than half that pace. It's like collecting taxes for education, then saving the money instead of investing it in the people who make that education possible. In 2024 alone, after years of building reserves, 8.2 million was shifted from the general fund to capital projects, about three times the annual cost of a competitive raise. This isn't about raising more taxes, it's about using what we already have and directing it toward fair competitive pay. I've expanded my analysis from 10 districts in our direct labor market to 31 across the region. In 2024 and '25, Haverford's contracted raises ranked near the bottom, trailing 81% of peers one year and 71% the next, continuing a long-running pattern of falling behind inflation, revenue growth, and the regional labor market. Looking ahead, peers have locked in average raises of about 2.5% through 2028, a benchmark Haverford must exceed to reach competitive pay. Competitive pay is a strategic investment. It attracts talent, sustains quality, and honors the people who have built Haverford's reputation. The numbers tell a clear story, but what we do with them is a choice. The resources are here, it's time to choose, and it's time to invest in the people who make our district thrive. Thank you.
So next up, we have Jillian Rogers. Jillian Rogers.
Hi, first, can you repeat the name that was before his? I believe this might be her.
I'm sorry? Allison Singson? Okay, that's fine. Yep, so can you just allow her to go first for me? Thank you.
Adele Singson, Haverford Township. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Adele, and I'm an eighth grader at Haverford Middle School. My family has lived in the township since 2019, and I have attended Haverford Township Public Schools since I could grade. I attended the school board meeting two weeks ago in support of our teachers and to listen to all the public comments on the matter of their contract. I'm shocked that after hearing from the public, the board has failed to negotiate an appropriate contract for the teachers. I'm the oldest of four kids, and I'm here to ensure that the district continues to retain and recruit quality educators like those who have shaped the individual I am, as well as future generations of Haverford students. To make my point, I have outlined several of the impactful teachers who have supported my growth and the growth of my siblings over the years. In second grade, Mrs. Gray had the patience of a saint and supported an extremely sensitive seven-year-old with the challenging transition between school districts. In third grade, Ms. Carney navigated the unimaginable circumstances associated with educating eight-year-olds through online, hybrid, and in-person learning during the most uncertain time of our lives. In fourth grade, Mrs. Devancey fostered our growth and appreciation for the real world by sharing the beauty and tragedy of real experiences. In fifth grade, Ms. Tierney's no-nonsense approach made my last year at Manoa one of my best by creating an environment of safety and understanding. In sixth grade, my math teacher, Mrs. Johnson, helped me celebrate my growth at times when I was discouraged. And Mrs. Scott, my English teacher, needs a whole three minutes on her own, but continues to be a mentor and a hero of mine two years later. In seventh grade, Mr. Irvine was genuinely one of the most patient individuals I've ever met. In eighth grade, Ms. Kindredgen has made science a subject I now look forward to every day. I leave her room each afternoon with a new fact or a new way of thinking. And finally, I cannot forget Mr. Harriet, my elementary school music teacher. He helped spark my ongoing passion for music and performing. And Ms. Alvacchio, aka Mrs. Donovan, my theater director. She spends countless after-school hours for several months to help us craft a musical production we are proud to present to our community. These 10 educators, and many I do not have time to acknowledge, are not just warm bodies. They are the heartbeat, they are the foundation of our education and learning, as well as our development as children, the future of this community, and the world. We need our teachers, we need these teachers. So I'm asking, no, I'm insisting, that you do what you were elected to do and reach an appropriate contract negotiation that ensures my siblings and students to come will still have Ms. Carney, Ms. Grossi, Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Clancy, Mrs. Brocklesby, Ms. Seiler, and Mr. Tallon for yous to come. Thank you.
Jillian Rogers. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jillian Rogers, and I'm a resident of Haverford. Over the past few weeks, I've listened to so many stories of fellow parents about how these teachers, these incredible teachers, have shaped their children's lives. I really wish I could do the same, but I can't, at least not yet. You see, my daughter is a brand-new kindergartner, just six weeks into her educational journey here in the Haverford School District. I don't have years of memories or tales of a teacher who unlocked her love of reading, or the one who saw the potential in her that she didn't yet see in herself. I only have a glimpse, the morning greetings, the patient guidance, the calm assurance that she is safe and cared for. And in that glimpse, I already understand why these families speak so passionately about these teachers. Sorry. I think I'm nervous as part of this. So my daughter, she was born in April 2020, literally days after the world shut down from COVID. For five years, isolation shaped our family's early experience. I'm sure a lot of other parents in this kindergarten class felt the same. That's why the school community means so much. At the kindergarten meet and greet in August, for the first time in years, I felt we belonged because of these teachers. In just a few short weeks, I've seen my daughter transform into a child who struggled a bit in preschool to someone who is generally excited to go to school every morning. Well, most mornings. But the fact remains, she is growing, she is thriving, and that is thanks to these amazing teachers. Look, I know you face financial constraints, those challenges are real, but when nearby school districts offer significantly higher top-step salaries, we risk, we run the risk of losing people who make Haverford exceptional. I urge you to find a way to meet these teachers as close as possible to what they are asking for, to what they need. I hope to return to this microphone years from now with stories of how Haverford teachers have changed my daughter's life. Please do not put that future in jeopardy. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Lisa Achuff, A-C-H-U-F-F. I apologize if I mispronounce, I definitely mispronounce your last name.
Welcome to Dr. Hayes and good evening, school board. My name is Lisa Acuff, and I'm a lifetime resident of Haverford Township. I am the parent of two students in the district, one at the high school and one at the middle school. I'm here tonight to express my strong encouragement to the board for you to seek a fair and deserving contract agreement with the Haverford Teachers Union immediately. This has gone on long enough, and these teachers do not deserve to work another day with the additional stress hanging over their heads. I know what they are feeling right now as this truly hits home for my family. I missed the last board meeting because I was at my own open house. I have been a proud special education teacher for the last 25 years in the Lower Marion School District, and my husband is a special education teacher in Marble Newtown. Despite our combined salaries, he still works a side job in the evenings, job coaching young adults with disabilities, as well as working ESY every summer. Over the years, I have picked up additional tutoring jobs. This is very common amongst teachers. There may be some people in this township who believe that teachers take too much or make too much and don't deserve the simple cost of living that these teachers are asking for. If that is the case, then they are very out of touch with what it means to live life as an educator in the year 2025. It feels like some people seem to already forget the hoops that educators had to jump through to learn how to teach kids on Zoom so that learning loss would not be, have been more severe due to the global pandemic that we all had to live through just five short years ago. Last week, my school building was placed on an unexpected emergency lockdown. In that moment, the years of active shooter drills and safety trainings that we have all been through kicked into gear, and keeping our building of more than 1,600 students safe and calm was at the forefront of all of our minds. The lockdown was due to three armed robbers who were in the loose, who were on the loose in the area of our building. These teachers sitting here tonight are trained, have been trained to protect our babies in an emergency situation. These people are not just here to teach our children how to read, write, and learn algebra. They do so much more, and they work countless hours behind the school day, beyond the school day, for our children. I can say that because I do it myself. Night after night, you will find me answering emails, writing IEPs, all while running to after-school activities, making dinner, and helping my own children with their homework. Our oldest daughter, Bella, as many teachers in this room know her as, thank you, was born with a very rare genetic disorder known as TCF20. She is intellectually disabled, has autism, ADHD, and epilepsy. My husband Ryan and I believe in our hearts that she was given to us for good reasons. As special education teachers, we fully believe in inclusion, and since kindergarten, this district has made, and these amazing teachers have worked collaboratively with us to provide her with the supports and services that she is needed to make incredible educational, physical, and social and emotional gains. Uh, sorry, I just lost my track. I'm almost done, I promise. It is not easy to send your child with disabilities into the hands of strangers year after year, but one thing has remained constant, and that is the caliber of the teachers that have loved, supported, and educated Bella. My youngest daughter, Brielle, who's with me here tonight, had a teacher at Chestnut Wall that she would go to every morning for a hug. I could go on for hours about the teachers in this room, but this thing's going to cut me off, it's cutting me off. I got an email today from a teacher, completely unsolicited. Dear Mr. and Mrs. Acuff, I had to share that working with Bella is truly the highlight of my day. I absolutely adore her to pieces, and I am grateful that you have entrusted her to here, entrusted her to us here at Haverford. She is such a love. This is just a small example of why these teachers are so incredible and why they deserve a fair contract to be settled like yesterday. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sue Shandler. Sue Shandler.
My name is Sue Shandler, and I'm a resident of Haverford. My husband and I are raising our two boys here. Our oldest just graduated from high school, having also participated in the DCTS Medical Careers Program. Our youngest is a junior, busy with school, athletics, and drama. Between them, they have a myriad of health issues, including life-threatening food allergies, two 504 plans, and a GIEP. If you don't know what those are, please ask a teacher, they'll be happy to explain. As for me, I have 35 years as an educator, 28 as an early childhood teacher of deaf children, and I am now in my eighth year as an early intervention service coordinator with DCIU. When I started my teaching career in 1990, teaching was simpler. We wrote IEPs in pencil at the IEP meeting and wrote four or five sentences in each area of development. The PSSA test did not exist, nor did no Child Left Behind. State standards were not yet created, so they weren't listed on bulletin boards to help explain the lesson of the day. As you can imagine, things today are much more complicated, and the expectation and demands placed on our teachers are significantly higher. Not only are our teachers teaching our children to count and to do calculus, but they are also teaching them how to take standardized assessments, supporting their mental health through pandemics, and through middle school. They support our kids through fire drills and now active shooter drills. Our teachers do more than just teach. They are not babysitters, yes, people have actually said that to me, and they don't have, quote, "a cushy job with their summers off." Throughout their day, our teachers act as coaches, cheerleaders, counselors, nurses, referees, parents, behavior analysts, and so much more. They inspire, motivate, guide, nurture, and encourage, just to name a few. They support kids with 504 plans, IEPs, difficult home lives, mental health issues, food allergies, et cetera. They work outside of their contracted day, spend their own money on supplies for their classrooms and their students, and struggle with their work-home balance, all while finding time, while trying to find time to go to the bathroom during the day. But most importantly, they love their jobs, and they love our children. As parents, we are exceedingly proud of our children. We have worked hard to help them become kind, compassionate, and critical thinkers who strive to be good citizens of the world. We know that we have not done this in a vacuum, and we are eternally grateful for the amazing teachers, nurses, coaches, guidance counselors, paraprofessionals, and other school personnel who have helped our boys become the young men they are today. Since COVID, Pennsylvania continues to be in a huge teacher shortage. I face it every day in my own work. Please do all that you can to help the amazing staff we have stay and to entice future teachers who want to work in Haverford. Our kids need them. And to all of you who continue to support our children, you have my undying gratitude and appreciation. Thank you for all you do every day.
I'm John Howe, 220 Pine Ridge Road. I live in Haverford with my wife, and our son attends Haverford Middle School. And thank you, school board, thank you for having us here tonight. I wanted to address the board update about the HTEA negotiation that was posted as a pop-up on the, to the district's website that accuses our teachers' association of spreading misleading information. This is a very serious accusation. Let's review the facts. The board announced at the public meeting on August 21st that they were seeking a cost saving on healthcare benefits because of the rising healthcare costs. However, costs have actually fallen considerably. Healthcare and prescription premiums are actually 20% lower than they were in 2019. Haverford already offers one of the least generous healthcare benefits among members of the Delaware County Public Schools Healthcare Trust. You also announced that the school board had offered teachers an annual 4% increase to the average teacher salary. HTEA posted on their website that this is not true, that the board is claiming costs for employees who have already resigned or retired, and that if the board had actually offered a 4%, they would have accepted the board's offer. I imagine many members of the community are quite confused at this point. The board then doubled down with its September negotiation update, saying that the average salary for teachers at Haverford would indeed increase by exactly 4.06%, and that when it is also accused HTEA of spreading misleading information. Two weeks ago, a community member named Jonathan Delise stood up here and wonderfully out loud explained how there could possibly be any confusion as to what the board's salary proposal actually does. No fancy economic forecast is needed to find out if the average salary would be 4% higher this year if your proposal were accepted. You just, you would just need to do the math and show your work. Thanks to Mr. Thanks to many community members writing the board and urging them to do, direct the district to show the data needed to this calculation, H D A now has it. H D A has done the math, and it has shown its work on the H D A website. It is now clear for anyone to verify that the board's proposal comes nowhere close to the increase the average salary by four percent that it claims. Everyone makes mistakes. Perhaps you didn't understand that you had been claiming costs for former employees who have already resigned or retired. There is no shame in making an honest mistake, but for you to fail to correct the record after having accused H D A of spreading misleading information, that would be shameful. The board has used district resources to publicly attack its own teachers for spreading misinformation when the reverse is clearly the case. Thankfully, this, this notice no longer shows up on automatically every time anyone connects to the district website, but it's still posted on the school board section of the district's website. I suppose it would be too much to expect a public apology for this false public information, but I respectfully request that this notice be taken down from the district's website. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kara Seeker, and I live at the sixteen hundred block of Hampton Road. I grew up in Haverford Town, and I attended H H S. Shout out to class of two thousand and eight. A few of my teachers are still currently working here. Some of my classmates are now teachers and faculty as well. I want to start by saying how special of a town and of a community that we live in, and especially when thinking about returning to Haverford Town and starting my own family. I will have a kindergartner starting at Chestnut Wall next year, and I am so proud to be a parent of a student that will go through the same excellent school district that I was so fortunate to attend. It prepared me for the opportunities to have choices and to truly do whatever I dreamed of. Beyond being, beyond this being my alma mater, I am still so much involved in the high school that my backyard faces the high school faculty parking lot. I can tell you from a firsthand account how many teachers come early and stay late outside of their contracted hours to meet the needs of our children. I see and hear teachers walking and talking endlessly about their classes. I hear from teachers, whom some of which are my neighbors, and probably yours too. Have one talk with any of these fine teachers, and you will see that they aren't just working. They live and breathe the success of our town. They ensure that when our kids win, we all truly win. Talk about some value added. I can relate to this feeling that a lot of the teachers have right now because I myself am also in education. Even more so, I can relate to the current teachers as I was a negotiating member for the union during my time teaching at Gerard College. I have my master's degree. I have taught science from elementary, middle, to A P Bio and high school. So when I saw a high school biology position open at Haverford High School not too long ago, I thought, heck yeah, that's a short commute. I applied, I had my initial screening, and I started to prepare for my demo lesson. But as I seriously considered my path here, I noticed the salary scale. If I were to take a position in my own neighborhood, I would not be able to afford my house. I would take a double-digit percentage pay cut. And now six weeks, six weeks without an updated contract? For me, you aren't hypothetically missing out on qualified teachers. I am one. I strongly urge the board, as a homeowner, parent, and lifelong community member of Haverford Town, to pay our teachers immediately with back pay, as I plan on advocating actively for my next school board vote as passionately as I am advocating for this contract renewal. Thank you.
The next person, Rich McGlorry.
Thirty-four wonderful years in the school district of Philadelphia, and now I'm an advocate for the best practices in public education, one of which is to provide a fair contract for our wonderful teachers. I cannot say it better than the people who were spoken before tonight, especially the young lady from the middle school with my autistic grandson. As, as many of you know, I wrote a book in two thousand and eight called Whose School Is It?, The Democratic Imperative for Our Schools. It was about giving students, parents, community members, and, most importantly, teachers, a true voice in what happens in their schools. I wrote this right after last meeting, and I have this to say to you. I was so proud of our community at the last school board meeting. I was proud to be part of it and you. I was also so proud of the way you, our school board, handled it. It was an awesome example of democracy in education, of democracy in our schools. It encouraged my heart. It was so inspiring to hear your voices. Democracy does not end with elections of our school leaders. It begins with elections. You all were elected to represent us, our community, all of us. Many in our, at our community spoke. They spoke with their hearts and their minds. You listened, you heard. You heard again from wonderful community members and wonderful, and a wonderful students who can speak for all the students at the middle school and our other schools. Now it is time for us to settle the contract. They only want basic fairness. You heard what is expected of you. But now it's a time for all of us together to roll up our sleeves and get to work, to collaboratively and collegially discuss and debate what we need to do to teach all of our children to read, write, and think, to understand the world we live in, to be able to determine fact from fiction, truth from falsities, which is difficult today, to be able to read life stories, make inferences, analyze ideas and characters, recognize themes, draw conclusions, and support our, our ideas with facts and points of contention from our, from our stories. It is also time to support our students and our teachers and our parents and our community. It is time for you, effective leaders, effective school governors, listen to the people they represent, and act on their collective benefits, to create a collective vision, a common mission, and a commitment of all to our task. It is all of us who make up our district. We elect you to represent us, and you all know how hard I worked to get you all elected. Thank you very much.
And so I do want to make a brief comment. The board appreciates those that came tonight that spoke, as well as in prior evenings and the emails that we have received. Please know that we do hear your comments. We continue to remain committed to working with the association towards a contract agreement that is feasible for all. The next regular board meeting will be held on Thursday, October the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Can I have a motion to accept or adjourn the meeting?
I moved to adjourn.
Moved in second. Meeting is adjourned.